First item on our agenda is a continued public hearing for 61 York Street, which is a multifamily subdivision consisting of 12 units, three of which are affordable. So how this will work is that we'll hear an update from the town planner and from the applicant. We'll review changes or update us on any changes from the last meeting. The board may ask some initial clarifying questions, and then we'll resume the public hearing, at which point the public would be welcome to give comments. And then after the public hearing, the board may make, take action on the application. Okay. Brittany Howard, town planner.
So at the meeting on March 27th, the board continued the public hearing to this evening. The board requested the applicant review the lighting plan, fence details and locations for better screening, landscaping plans with regards to heights of planting evergreens and the spaces in front of the building, and some other site details. The applicant addressed these items in memos dated March 23rd and April 7th and supplied updated plans. They are still requesting the following waivers for the 20-foot perimeter landscaping buffer to be, the 50-foot perimeter landscaping buffer to be reduced to 20 feet, reduction in the separation between the proposed driveway and the intersection of York Street from 100 feet to 86 feet, and the two-foot wide planting strip between the onsite walkway and the parking area. The town engineer reviewed their additional submittal in response to his comments. Those have been met. They did make some modifications to the stormwater design per the board's request of the last meeting to see how overdesigned it was. It was designed to meet the 25-year storm but also had additional capacity. The fire department was okay with the proposed turnaround as long as it is kept free of snow and storage of any other items. Police and public services also had no further comments. I did receive another email from an abutting property owner who was at the last meeting but just had some additional items that they would like to submit for the board, which I can read into the record when we get to the public hearing portion of the application.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Connor Ritter. I'm a project manager with Walsh Engineering, representing 61 York Street LLC tonight. We were previously in front of the board for the first part of this public hearing on March 27th. Today, we are proposing a 12 residential rental units serviced by a private driveway with access from York Street. Three of these 12 are to be designated as affordable units. All units within the development are identical, and selection of which units will be deemed as affordable will be on a tenant basis. The project is intending on connecting to public utilities from York Street, and various utility districts have been contacted for review and ability to serves. And then, running into some responses to comments received during the first half of the public hearing, one note was looking for a plan that shows proximity to abutting properties for the development. And if you look in Appendix E of your site plan package, there are two figures. There is one showing a 200-foot proximity boundary to the property, and there is a second plan, which I have a larger version up here as well, that shows in further detail some measurements to the direct abutting properties, including relevant measurements such as distance to property lines, distance to tree lines, and distance between the nearest structures between properties to give a better, a better idea of proximity and elevation as well. A second comment we received was in regards to the landscaping. The landscaping, we were requested to make sure we provide tall enough vegetation for effective screening, the addition of plantings in front of each unit to avoid fill around existing root systems, and make sure that the 20-foot landscaping buffer is maintained in perpetuity. In response to these, we have designated some of the evergreen, or we have designated the evergreen plantings in the vegetated buffer surrounding the development as having a bit of a larger size. They are all fallen bushy evergreens. We have eastern red cedars and green giant thujas running around there, so that should provide a pretty healthy screen of trees at a lower elevation than the existing elevation, which has a very high canopy but kind of an emptier understory. So that should work well to screen between our development and the abutters as requested. Specific plants such as arborvitae have been replaced with more deer-resistant plants as requested. And as you can see in front of units three through 12, we have added some planting beds adjacent to the stairs to dress that up further. The walkway in front of said units has been widened to six feet in order to alleviate the concern about vehicle overhangs, anything that may back up to obstruct the walkway. The six-foot width should give ample space for any situation where that may occur for pedestrians to walk around it. Our lighting plans, we have updated the lighting plans in order to show illumination levels across the entire property rather than just through the developed area and at the property lines themselves. So it gives a better picture of exactly how the lighting is changing as it goes across the site from the various proposed lighting fixtures throughout the project. And then, the stormwater, you'll see within the stormwater report revision provided to you that we have included an evaluation of how our, or an analysis of the area under the 50-year and 100-year storm events as requested. Going forward, other, other revision we made based on the previous public hearing, we have added fencing at the end of the front parking lot, the one that is directly adjacent to Route 1, in order to provide screening between it and the abutter at 63 York Street. We have revised our architectural plans to clarify that there will not be egress along the backside of the units, and thus there are no egress pathways. And we have, we have placed, I believe we have expanded the fence along the end of the development, the west end where it abuts number two Waterford Green Drive to provide further screening for, with that fence. And the fencing intended to be used throughout the project will match that of the, that of Waterford Green Drive, and it's that, I believe, is a vinyl fencing that is requested. With that, you can find a full response to all of those public hearing questions and comments that we received on the 27th as part of your site plan review package, but at this time, I am available for any further questions.
Thank you. Board members' initial questions? Dan?
Nothing at this point. I just want to acknowledge, thank you for the changes from last meeting, and just wait for more public comment.
I do have a couple of questions, but I'll wait till afterwards.
But I want to thank you for putting all that information together, looking for, it's helpful for us, and I think it's helpful for the public to understand exactly what's going on. So, thanks.
Janice? I guess I'm on the right one? Am I on the right one?
You're on this one.
Okay. Connor, thank you for the changes. I have a question that's sort of general, I think, and I think it's more, so I understand the process. So this is going to be all rental units. So I see your plan to inspect the stormwater devices every six months. In a rental unit like this where there's no one on site, how do you typically deal with any problems that arise? And I'm talking about, like, the fence. Something goes wrong with the vinyl fence, you know, there's damage, a piece falls down in a storm. The plantings, which of course we want inspected forever, they're dying. How does someone, and what is the schedule, and who's responsible for coming to look at those things? And if someone who lives there sees an issue, who do they contact? How does that typically get done in a rental unit like this?
So with rental units like this, there is still a kind of primary property owner or rental management company or associate maintaining the properties and kind of managing those. So there will be someone for the renters to refer to in the event that anything is of concern. So there'll be something of a superintendent, I would say.
Okay. And one last question is, can you show us again where the vinyl fence will actually be on the, you know, outside of the?
So there is fencing, let me make sure I can draw this right on the screen. So there will be fencing along the end of the property here, running down to the end right there. And then there will be a second fence along kind of the front of the stand of trees to act as shielding from this parking lot to the abutter.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Thanks, Janice. Ted?
Yes, thank you for all the work you did in responding to all the comments, one by one. I appreciate that. I'm going to hold my comments until after the rest of the public hearing, but I have one sort of question for Brittany. There's one remaining piece, the town council reviewing affordable housing provisions.
Yeah, the restricted covenants that go with the application. So there'd be, there's a, this would be the end of the public hearing for preliminary, but there'd be a final meeting where that would be all submitted prior to that final meeting. Because it's not a substantive change to any of the plans that the board would be reviewing.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that response. Okay, so, thank you.
Thanks, Ted. I don't have any clarifying questions at the moment, so at this point, I will open up the public hearing. Members of the public wish to come up and speak to the application. We'd particularly like to hear any comments about the changes that have been made in the plan as it currently stands. So come up, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Thank you. Turn on the mic? Sorry. You have to turn on the microphone first. At the bottom, there you go. Thank you.
Got it. Okay. My name is Margaret Sanders, and I live at 16 Waterford Green Drive. At the last meeting, it was stated that the fire chief approved the planned proposal after determining that the fire department's longest vehicle would be able to make ample maneuvers on the site if an area was created in the plans to allow a turnaround for the vehicle. My question is, was the decision being made using a scenario with or without vehicles in the lot? My concern is that the chance of an empty parking lot is extremely unlikely. Fire can move swiftly, and it would take only one spark to jump the 20-foot variance to spread the flames to the connecting properties. I would appreciate clarification, and my main concern is the safety for the individuals involved. And I just had a question regarding the question that was asked from, is it Janice? Would the abutters be allowed to get the contact information if they see issues with the plantings or the fences to call? Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Catherine Toth, Kennybunk Gallery Motel and Cottages, the abutting property. I just had a question. The last meeting, are there steps on the back of the condos? Because I thought that you said no, but in the plans there are, though.
That's been.
Oh, okay. All right. And then, I don't know if offhand, if you remember, what color tags is it that shows where the back of the buildings are? I was walking out back of the property, and I couldn't remember the, if it was like the red or the blue, if you know offhand, you don't know. Okay, I was just curious. Okay. No, that's, no, that's fine. I guess, so I'm assuming that you guys make the final decision if the variance gets granted or not, if it goes from 50, if it's allowed 50 to 25. And if you guys go with that, does the abutting properties, is there appeals that we can go through, or is your decision a final decision?
Decision is made by the planning board, and you have within 30 days of the planning board making its final determination, which would be after a vote on the final subdivision, not tonight's vote. Because tonight's just giving preliminary plan approval, but it doesn't give approval to the project.
All right.
You would have 30 days to appeal that to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Actually, I take that back. We're going to, I have to now go to court.
I think you're right. I think it goes right to.
It has to go to the court.
Yeah.
It used to be to the ZBA, now it's to the court.
I'll look that up real quick, but I think you're right.
Okay, and that's it.
Sure.
To members of the Kennybunk Planning Board, given that the public hearing phase of 61 York Street proposed development remains open, we'd like to take this opportunity to remind the board that Waterford Green is a private roadway. Please ensure that this is noted in documents, that all contractors, subcontractors, delivery staff, and others rendering work on the project understand they may not park on Waterford Green Drive. We appreciate that this communication will be included in the formal packet slash admission. Sincerely, Marie Louis St. Ange, President of the Waterford Green Homeowners Association.
Anyone else? At this point, we'll close the public hearing. If you have, if you want to respond to any of those comments, welcome to, for questions.
Sure. To respond to Margaret's question regarding the fire chief approval, that was done, the, our turning models were conducted under the assumption that the parking lot would be full and that a fire truck apparatus would not have that space open and available for To respond to Kathy's questions, the steps on the backs of the unit, as that was mentioned with the discussion about a point of egress on the back of the units, those steps do not exist, and they've been since revised or removed from the architectural plans. So that's not of concern. And then, as far as the stakeout flag color, I don't recall what color flagging is out there. Also, I believe the flagging that is out there is reflective of the sketch plan, which may differ from what we're looking at today. And then, to respond to the Waterford Green HOA comment, we're on the private drive. As we've acknowledged in our design process of not pulling a driveway off of Waterford Green Drive, we do recognize that it is private and not to be used in part of this development.
Dan? Further questions?
At this point, no, Chris, I'm good. Thank you.
Bob?
Probably some of it's housekeeping. One is the fire chief's requirement that the turnaround be cleared 365 days a year, 24/7. That should be a note, and I think it will make that as a condition of approval for final, so you should be adding that to the plan. I just have one comment regarding site distance, and this will be one that'll be evaluated, I think, at construction, provided it's approved. It's just where you're trying to keep that large tree and the undergrowth that's on there on the southbound side. I've driven by this thing now about half a dozen times, and I keep looking at it and going, it might be a little challenged on there, so that should be evaluated, and I would say we may want to make that as a condition in the findings that, you know, Chris, go out, not this Chris, Chris Osterreiter, go out and just evaluate it when the clearing's all done to give a call on the site distance.
Would you like I respond to comments or wait till the end?
You can wait till the end. Okay. As long as you don't have any issue with the note for the fire chiefs as a condition. I'm just telling you, I'm going to make a recommendation when it goes to final as far as the site distance issue. Okay? And that would just be in the written findings. The other thing that I have concern with, and I know the neighbors do, and I always usually have this, where we have that flexibility to reduce the buffer from 50 feet to 20 feet. So part of it, you've already addressed by the fact that the HOA is going to be managing this thing in perpetuity, and I just want to make sure that that's clear, and I'm questioning, this is a question more for the board, too, is whether we should have that as a note under the general notes on the subdivision plan that gets recorded. Of course, all the plans are referenced, but, so, you don't have to answer that now, but I mean, it's something I will definitely bring up when it comes to final, that we need to make sure that that buffer is going to be maintained in perpetuity. Maybe in the HOA documents, but nine times out of 10, when people go to the registry of deeds, if it's not on the plan, doesn't exist, and that's why we require all the plans that are part of the approval package to be listed on the subdivision plan. It may be a little bit of a belt and suspenders, but I think that's worth it, especially in this case, where if we're looking at reducing that from 50 to 20 feet. The other concern I have, again, comes with clearing during construction. You know, we can all make the best guess we have, knowing that we've got a mass of trees there and shrubs and understory, and then when you start doing the clearing, all of a sudden, it doesn't quite look the same way you think it's going to look. So I think that's going to be another thing that I'm going to want to have Chris Osterreiter evaluate during construction, is if all of a sudden, there's holes in there that your proposed planting plan is not plugging, that the planting needs to be adjusted. And you may have trees where they really don't need to be, and you could shift them, more or less a field adjustment. But I think, especially along Waterford and along the Waterford Green and on Lot 2, or Unit 2, and then also with the motel and the residence that's up closer to the roadway. I think those are all important, to make sure that if we do grant that, it's going to be protecting them. I guess I'm just going to throw a comment out about traffic, and I know that Chris Osterreiter indicated that it should not have a significant impact. I say this only because when I've traveled by here, and I think I made it clear, my mother lives in here, and I've tried coming out of here sometimes, especially during the active season. People are driving a hell of a lot faster. That's not your problem. That's a town enforcement issue. But it's tough to get out of there. In fact, my sister, over the weekend, anecdotally, not knowing, talking about this project, that somebody came right up on her tail end as she was trying to turn in here, and floored it, went by her, and raised his hand in a friendly gesture as he was thinking she was driving too slow, which was the speed limit for that section of road. So it can be a challenge, and I want to, as a sub myself, recognize the fact that there are issues, but it's not part of this applicant's responsibility to address. On the tree selection, I like the eastern red cedar. The green giant is close to somewhat deer-resistant. You know, if it was up by the Owl's Head Museum, I tell you, forget it. I don't care what you use, they'll gnar it down to nothing. So, but that's, that's an alternative selection, so I think those are fine. And that should give, and the size changes you've made, I think that'd be a market improvement in terms of being able to effectively start to get a much more substantial buffering in that location, so. Question on your fence on the end. And I asked this before, Connor, and I guess when I looked at your grading plan, and I looked at your section showing where that fence is, and you made reference to the fence being on the top of the grade, and I guess when I look at what the grade of the parking lot is and where the fence is, it almost looks like it's down slope on your cross section, so that it's actually, won't be six feet high at the top of the parking area, but it's tough to tell exactly what you're looking at in terms of, what is the height of the fence blocking light going through? Do you have any idea in terms of where that's placed and what that height is?
Yeah, so through the, through the driveway aisle there, at the very end, the fence is only about a foot lower than the very end of the drive. So you're looking at at least a five-foot height to be getting at the end there, so that should, that should provide the screening from vehicular light that we're looking for.
Okay, I just want to be sure, because you didn't have any dimensions on it, which I didn't expect with that cross section, but that raised my attention.
Yep. Yeah, there is also like a, kind of a small berm when you get closer to the unit, so it does look a little less on the section, but it is an ample height.
Glad you updated the egress issue off the decks. That was, I know, a concern a few people had in terms of accessibility and having additional hardscape or anything on that side of the building, either side of the I think those were the ones I had. Yep, that's it. I'm all set.
Thanks, Bob. Janice?
Connor, regarding the comment about the parking along Waterford Green, would you guys be willing to fund and post a couple of no parking signs along your side of the road there? You know, at least during the construction phase? That way, there's no mistake about whether people can park there. I don't think there's any no parking signs there in today.
Are you saying, like, in the existing kind of gravel lot that is there today?
Well, you know, you've got, you've got a border with Waterford Green. It's kind of, you know, mixed stuff. Now, post a couple of signs along in there so that no one tries to park along the border of your property on Waterford Green?
I believe that there are signs there existing that state exactly what you're.
There are? Okay. All right. I couldn't remember if there were or not.
I don't remember if I have a picture of it. I believe there are, there are a few signs as you come down here that say no parking along the street there.
Okay. All right, good. Then we're good with that. I think that's my only question I have left. Everybody's kind of covered it. I think I'm good for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Janice. Ted?
Yes, thank you. This is a really tight engineering exercise, and really tight. And within the parameters you've set, which include the request for the waiver, seems to me you've done all you could, and appreciate that. But the, the buffer issue is still, is still there as a general issue, and that I would think that before we finally sign off any really tight controls to ensure that the buffer works, tight controls during the construction phase and in the ownership phase later.
And I think that's, I think others had mentioned that, that there be, these controls be written into the plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Ted. Can you just review the additional stormwater events that you, that you projected out the 50, 100-year storms in those results? Just so we have a better understanding of... Under the town engineer's signed off on all your calculations and think this is an adequate system? I just want to, you did the work. I'd like to hear you present it to us, the extra stuff, just to...
Sure. So we took the model as we had designed it for the two 10 and 25-year storm events as regulated by the town and with the rainfall depths provided by the main Department of Environmental Protection, their Chapter 500 on stormwater design and regulation guidelines. So with that, we added two additional storms just to observe what would occur during said storms. That being the 50-year storm, which has a 7.3-inch rainfall depth, and a 100-year storm, which has an 8.7-inch rainfall depth. These compared to the 25 being a 6.2, so just kind of incrementally higher from that point. When we evaluated this, under kind of our baseline model for design, utilizing an infiltration rate of 2.41 inches per hour, which is the MDPs rate that they use for BMPs. What we observed in the model was the 50-year storm would have a peak flow rate of 1.6 cubic feet per second. And the 100-year storm would have a peak flow rate of 2.8 cubic feet per second. And this is exclusively for the analysis point three that was modeled kind of along the Waterford Green Drive. The other two analysis points on our site, where it flows directly to the west and to the south of the property, saw no increase in peak flow rates.
Can you just point out those points on the map so people understand?
Sure.
So the two points that you reviewed that have no, there'll be still no runoff after 100-year flood are where, points two, one and two are where?
So that would be the direct runoff along the western property line and the direct runoff along the southern property line. So we just see that increase along Waterford Green Drive, which is expected for large storm events. And that being said, the stormwater system that we've designed does retain a fair amount of it. It's just when you get into a 50 and 100-year storm, they're very significant. And you're gonna, you're very rarely gonna see systems that are designed to maintain that capacity. And that being said, in such a large storm event as those, the runoff coming from this property in kind of the grand scheme is not gonna be as noticeable because you're gonna see that much water coming from everywhere. And another thing we took a look at real quick was kind of the greater watershed that we're a part of that runs down to, there's a low point here just after the first set of condominiums as part of Waterford Green Drive. So this entire watershed that's going to be running to that point that we're included in is 16.6 acres, of which we are contributing 1.27, about 7.7% of. So there's, there's gonna be a lot more area that is going to be, you're gonna witness rainfall and runoff coming from during an event like that.
Thank you. I think that's helpful information for us, and I appreciate you guys doing that extra work. I think that's all the questions I had.
Actually, yeah, one last thing to note about those, those larger stormwater or rainfall events is, once again, this is under the lowest and most conservative infiltration expectations, or I guess kind of what we've restricted ourselves to. Based on our findings and the findings of our soil scientist, the rate that we are expecting to see for infiltration through the soils is anywhere between six inches per hour and 20 inches per hour. And if we were, I guess the best way to describe it is, in order to see no, a no increase to the peak during the 50-year storm, the soils just need to provide as low as 4.9 inches per hour, which is less than the minimum we're truly expecting. And then for the 100-year, it would be 9.1 inches per hour, which is well within that six to 20-inch range. So conservatively modeling it, we would see a peak. But in actuality, if a 50- or 100-year storm did occur, we may in fact see nothing.
All right. So we have no additional comments or questions. Do we act on the waivers tonight, or is that at final? That's tonight, right, at this point? I did that. Already, yeah. Yep.
I don't, I don't know if the board just, I mean, we did already review the architectuals on an earlier meeting, but that is part of design review. I didn't, and the buildings are facing Route 1, so you're not ending up with a blank side of the building. So I just didn't know if the board wanted to briefly go over that, but... Do you have the architectuals available for the board to look at?
I do.
Yeah.
I think I have a paper copy, actually.
I think I have a digital copy.
Is that visible?
To us, it is, mostly.
Michael, can you switch to my computer? Because I have them up, yeah, there's just a little delay.
All right, can you show us what we're looking at for Route 1 frontage?
Sure. So what we're looking at here is, up in the top left corner there, is the front face of the building. So units, and this is for a pair of units. So what you'd see here is essentially a left unit and a right unit making up a pair. So 1 and 2, 3 and 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. So we would see for units 1 and 2, this is what would be facing Route 1 directly. And then the top right one is what you'd see from the right elevation. So in this case, that's gonna be, it's also very similar to what you'd see on the left side as well. Both faces are very similar to one another. This will be to the sides of the building. In the line of them, they'll kind of be facing an alley of one another with a face kind of open on either end with units 3 and 12. And then the bottom, bottom left, we are seeing the rear of the units where we have, we have the decks off the back of the units. And we also have bulkheads for each unit as well.
And this must be some old architectuals. They still have stairs depicted.
Yeah, I think I might have the old...
Yep.
Yeah, those should be updated to have those stairs removed from. Yep, there we go.
Okay.
Yeah, that should be probably the only change seen on that.
Okay. And what is the siding material? Do we know?
Yeah, I believe it's vinyl siding. It's gonna look very similar to some of the other properties in the area on Route 1. There's some very similar-looking rental units.
Board members have questions? Okay, thank you. All right, do you want to go through your waiver requests?
I don't know if you want to just start with the perimeter buffer or if you want to start with whatever one you want to start with. The floor is yours.
Sure, yeah, I can, I'll go through these based on the waiver request list I've included in Attachment B of the site plan review package. The first waiver we are requesting is the reduction to the green perimeter strip and landscaping buffer from 50 feet to 20 feet, which is the minimum allowed per the ordinance. We are making this request in order to effectively develop the site with the proposed 12 units allowed by the York Street Mixed Residential and Commercial Use District space and bulk standards in conjunction with the 25% affordable housing density bonus. The, with the dimensions of the property, it's just, it's a fairly narrow property running through there. So maintaining a 50-foot buffer leaves very little developable area through the middle. And kind of in lieu of the full 50-foot buffer, we are proposing extensive landscaping and, as we've discussed, with the four-season buffer providing evergreens that are full and bushy for screening, fencing to provide additional screening to butters, all while making sure that we don't overcrowd the buffer so all the landscaping that we're providing can thrive and be maintained effectively and utilizing durable plants, so once again, they maintain. And with this also, we are proposing the kind of, the three affordable units to kind of give back with it. The second waiver, we are...
Why don't we take them one at a time?
Sure.
So...
Chris, just a housekeeping item, if you want to promote Dan to a voting member.
Thank you.
Yep.
We'll promote Dan Kylie as a voting member for the remainder of the meeting in absence of one of our regular members. Thank you. Board members have questions about the first waiver request?
Again, just reiterating some of the comments, just to make it clear, part of your request for this waiver is you're documenting or will document in the HOA documents about maintaining the buffer in a vegetated state in perpetuity. So I think that added information that we will see for final, that what they're requesting seems to be, and with the plans, changes they've made, I think that seems reasonable.
So because it's a rental, there wouldn't be HOA documents. So it'd be on the plans, and then we could put it in the findings as a condition as well.
Which is kind of where I was driving before, anyway, so...
Janice, do you have any comments or questions? You don't, do you have any comments or questions about?
No, I do not.
Ted, do you have any comments?
Except, as I said before, this is such tight engineering that you want to have every T crossed and every I dotted on the planner in airtight documents. I think this is really important in this case. This is a tough one to have to deal with. Thank you.
Okay, a motion on the waiver?
I'll make a motion to approve the applicant's request for a waiver from Article 10, Section 10.D3 to reduce the required 50-foot perimeter buffer around the site and replace it with a 20-foot perimeter buffer, with the caveat, of course, that it be planted very heavily as per your specifications and that those plants be maintained in perpetuity.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That waiver is granted. All right, your next waiver?
Great. The second waiver we are requesting is to reduce the separation between the proposed driveway and the intersection between York Street and Waterford Green Drive as measured from the inside edge of the intersection to the inside edge of the driveway from the 100 feet as required by Article 11, Section 8.6.1C, down to 86 feet. So a 14-foot reduction. This request is being made in order to avoid cutting down a large evergreen tree at the front of the site, as well as to avoid relocating an existing utility pole in that area. I have a nice picture of this somewhere.
Michael, can you flip back to the other computer? Sorry, I told you I wasn't gonna do this.
Yep. So this is that very full tree that would necessitate cutting down in order to maintain that 100-foot separation. And in requesting this, we have, we have reviewed the traffic generated by our site and its impact on Route 1, as well as site distances, looking in both directions with, while maintaining this tree on site. And we found sufficient, sufficient site distance. And we didn't, or the traffic engineer did not deem any negative impact on traffic due to this reduction. And the statement from our traffic engineer can be found in Attachment F of the site plan review.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or Dan?
Just one question. The sidewalk for this area, will that be between the guide wire that you see in the photo here and the pole itself? Is that how this lays out?
Yes.
But essentially at that jog there, were it...
Yeah, let me just make sure. Yeah, so the guy wire is on the, on the tree with the pole on the opposite side. So the sidewalk would be looking to locate between those.
So you're gonna have to look at the angle that guy wire is and terminology, whether or not you're gonna have to do an outrigger type of support on there. So you're gonna need to coordinate that with Kennabuck Light and Power to make sure. You don't want to be taken off someone might take their head out walking by, so...
Or the sidewalk plow.
Sidewalk plow will just take the guy wire out.
We will, we will make sure to coordinate that with CMP.
Kennabuck Light.
Kennabuck, Kennabuck Light and Power.
Yes.
Special. Janice, do you have any questions?
Connor, what kind of tree is that?
Great question.
What kind of tree is that?
You want me to bail him out?
Yes, please. We'll help, we'll throw my bow in this time.
Looks like it's an eastern red cedar.
Eastern red cedars.
Perfect. So it's gonna match a lot of the proposed landscaping. Yeah.
That's why I made that comment earlier.
Thank you.
Okay, I just want to make sure, you know, it's gonna be around for a while to make it worth your while of moving this, that's all.
Yeah, it is a it it looks to be healthy and it's got some nice old growth to it. So we'd like to maintain it if we can.
Ted, do you have any? All right, Janice, we'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the applicant's request. To grant the applicant's request to waive Article 11, Section 8 dot C dot 3. Six, can we try your, was it one again?
Yep.
Section 8 point 6 point 3. To achieve a reduction in the separation between the proposed driveway and the intersection of York Street and Waterford Green Drive from 100 feet is required to 86 feet for the purpose of maintaining that lovely tree. As well as the curb radii.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That waiver is granted. Five, zero. Your third request?
Our third and final request is a waiver to eliminate the two-foot wide planting strip on site between the walkway and abutting parking area as required by Article 11, Section 8 point 8 point B. This request is being made in order to provide a greater separation between the walkway and the units for the benefit of the tenants. As well as the two-foot wide planting strip due to its location there between the walkway and the parking would be difficult to maintain and is likely to be trampled over and and laid bare as people will park. And they're not gonna walk down to the aisle on the roadside. They're just gonna kind of hop over onto the sidewalk. A agreement we've come to as part of that walkway is we have made it a six-foot wide walk in order to provide plenty of pedestrian walkway space in the event that trucks or large vehicles decide to park and overhang the walkway with a portion of the vehicle body.
Uh, any questions or comments from the board? Ted? Janice? A motion?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the applicant's request for a waiver of Article 11, Section 8 dot 8 dot B to eliminate the two-foot wide planting strip between the onsite walkway and the parking areas required by the ordinance in recognition of the fact that he widened that sidewalk at our request to ensure that people have enough room behind anybody with an overhanging bumper to get around.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That waiver is granted. Preliminary plan approval? We need to, motion to approve the preliminary plan?
I would like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plan for 61 York Street as shown.
Second.
You want to add conditions to this?
Not necessary conditions as the items we have discussed tonight for the applicant to have addressed for the final subdivision. I mean, such final subdivision plan. Those items, I know you were typing away, we have them on the minutes.
Yep.
So those items need to be provided as part of the final plus our typical additional notes.
Yeah, um, I know you have water approval. I don't think you got final sewer approval. That would be needed for final review. Obviously, our town council reviewing the restrictive covenants, that needs to be touched based on too. The snow removal for the fire department, which may require removing snow from the site if there's not adequate enough storage for big storm events, that should be included. The perpetuity of landscaping. The note about maybe having to remove undergrowth on that tree that they're planning on saving to accommodate. Site distance. You mentioned an item about shuffling landscaping if needed.
Oh, what I said was when they go to do the lot clearing, they may not have material where they think they have it. And for Chris Osterreiter, and that would be a part of the findings. But for them to be aware, that's why I brought it up now, to evaluate where there may be holes that either they have to move some of what they're showing to fill holes and or supplement vegetation. But that's more a case of the findings. They can't really put anything in a plan until.
Then the guide wire issue, I'm assuming the board would like to know the results of that prior to the meeting if that needs to be relocated.
And we have the emergency vehicle keeping the end of that clear at 365 days.
I don't know if we want to put something in there though that kind of strongly reiterates back again to the contractor subcontractors that Waterford Green is a private roadway, so there are should be no parking during any construction phase of that.
I did, Chris Osterreiter and I talked about that today. Not sure that should necessarily be on a plan because that's an enforcement issue with the PD. But just to make sure that it's strongly reiterated during construction that there is to not be parking there.
We can make it as a condition on the findings effect. It's not, that is recorded, but it is a case where the planning board can't put that condition on there that during the period of construction, it is enforceable.
Well, it becomes an issue of enforcement. Usually the planning board findings is enforced by the code officer. And the code officer isn't really going to enforce parking. So that's why it was sort of, it's an enforcement issue, but through the police department.
Have a conversation.
I can get clarification on that before the final meeting, but yeah.
Or we put spike mats.
All right, we have a motion that was made and seconded. With the discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Preliminary approval has been granted. Thank you. All right, we will see you. Yep. So where we go now is that the applicant will go through and make adjustments to the plan, adding the notes and things we discussed tonight, come back with a final plan, which the board will review to make sure all the items that we discussed are included. There will not be a public hearing portion to that plan, but the public obviously will be encouraged to keep an eye on the agenda and they're welcome to come to attend those meetings when that plan comes back before us. Will they be additional notifications? No, because.
There is no additional notification, so please make sure to sign up for notify me on the town website to get notice of the agendas that are posted. If there's any significant changes to the plan based on any of this or any significant information that's permitted, the board can decide to hold another public hearing.
Yep. All right, thank you. Next item on our agenda is the preliminary meeting, McNeil family subdivision revision. Brittany, if you could introduce this to us, and then we'll hear from the applicant.
The applicant is proposing to amend the approved and recorded McNeil family subdivision that was recorded back in 2013. During construction on Two Gathering Way, it was determined that the structure was in a side setback. The applicant supplied a new plan showing the existing proposed property line between Two and Four Gathering Way. They are shown as lots one and two on the plan. New lot areas are also depicted and they are compliant with the zoning district. Since only a minor modification is being proposed, relocation of a lot line, the board should follow the procedures for final approval for a minor subdivision and set a public hearing date. There was, we typically do sidewalks. I don't know if the board wants to do sidewalks for this minimal of a line change is being shifted over, I believe, two feet. But that would be up to the board for discussion this evening. Dan is here representing the property. He's the property owner for Lot 1.
So can you turn on the microphone, the bass? There you go.
And just identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Dan Whiting. So building on Lot 2 right here, and there was a snafu that we didn't catch. My mortgage company did a survey and found that we were two feet over the line of a 35-foot setback. So we are proposing to change the line of the subdivision by two feet in order to be in compliance of the subdivision. And this is the other owner of the lot, right next to Lot 2 right here. This is Scott McNeil, my father-in-law. So be happy to answer any questions if you have them or if there's anything else I need to address.
Thank you. Board members have any questions? Start with Dan.
I mean, it seems straightforward. The only question I have is relative to Four Gathering Lane, the impact to your title and deed as that now reduces your property by that two-foot distance. And I'm not sure what the conditions are of that.
So they're both applicants on this for both properties and it is making his lot slightly smaller, but it still meets the setbacks for the setbacks. It still meets the lot size for the zone.
But in terms of.
So basically, two deeds would be recorded, one for each lot.
That's.
Yep.
Just want to make sure that's clear. Yep.
I'm just glad it's not fall. This is the site I told you that we went on for sidewalk and it was a deer perch and a woman up in the deer perch and some of her husband on the ground and scared the hell out of them. And they were actually, I think they went on very mad because we ruined their day of hunting.
Janice, any questions?
Not really. You're just correctness for a couple of feet, basically, right? No, no questions.
No questions. Does the board feel a need for a sidewalk? Saying shaking heads, so that was. No, I don't think we do. Again, this is pretty straightforward. Unfortunate. Didn't get caught during construction, but I understand these things happen. Yeah, so I have, we have no further questions. Set a public hearing date? What is our?
So because this is just a minor, you do need to do a public hearing. Yeah, for minor final.
Subdivision.
Yeah, for subdivision. But the noticing requirements are only seven days, so we could get this on the May 8th meeting because later in the meeting I'll talk about Jeffrey's Way and Vernal Pool, so they're gonna be moved to a different public hearing, so there is availability on that meeting on May 8th.
Okay. So we will set a public hearing for May 8th, 2023?
Do you just want to accept the plans? Because technically, this is prelim for final. Next is final.
Yep. So we'll need a a motion to accept the preliminary plan. As complete. No, we accept.
You have to accept it. Is there additional information that's gonna be submitted with this for the minor? Just the plan?
Just the plan, and then the next you would approve the findings and the plan. Yeah.
Okay. Just want to be sure.
They were granting preliminary approval.
Preliminary for minor subdivision.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to grant the amender for the minor subdivision of the McNeil family subdivision at Two and Four Gathering Lane to correct a minor setback issue as proposed.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Preliminary plan approval has been granted, and we will see you at the public hearing on May 8th. Thank you.
With minor, their their public hearing is the final. You don't have a public hearing and then a final. That's why this is preliminary. Yeah.
This is the shortest one I think I've ever seen.
Next item on our agenda is a preliminary meeting for a map correction of the Shoreland zoning map at 24 Forest Hill Lane. Brittany?
So you're not gonna be able to put that there just because they need to be able to hear you on the mic, but you could probably move it, move it, put it off to the side, but move that chair. Yeah, I can also, I also have it available on the screen too, if you want to just do that. I have the aerial that you emailed me too. So I'll, let me know where you want me to start once I introduce you. Yeah, okay. So this is for 24 Forest Hill Lane, Map 91 Lot 55. Chris Kopey from Kopey Environmental LLC is here representing the property owner. The applicant is proposing a map correction to the Shoreland zoning map per Article 3, Section 1F of the zoning ordinance. The Shoreland zoning map shows the majority of 24 Forest Hill Lane being in the Resource Protection District due to its proximity to a Priority 1 wetland. Kopey Environmental LLC conducted field research to determine the limits of the wetlands. They provided two maps, one showing the current Priority 1 wetland line based on the Shoreland zoning map and one showing the proposed line based on their field field research. The town's Shoreland zoning map sometimes has inaccuracies. Due to these inaccuracies, there are provisions for landowners to make a correction. The board to determine if they want to do a sidewalk and if the supply documentation meets the requirements, move forward with a public hearing. And this is Chris from Kopey Environmental.
Hi, my name is Chris Kopey, Kopey Environmental, and I'm on, I'm here on behalf of Denise Collins, the owner at 24 Forest Hill Lane. Perfect. Um, should I just start out with a introduction and some hit the highlights? Okay. So this this first plan is right from the zoning map. We digitized it into CAD. So it's it's pretty accurate. It's right from the zoning map. It's the zoning map. It's on the Shoreland zoning map. It's the map on the right side. Because there's two, there's two maps on that zoning map. So the Collins lot is, has two, has two districts that affect it. We're not, at this point, we're not interested in the the priority two wetland. If you notice, the priority two wetland, sorry, district encompasses the whole lot. But we're we're not objecting to that priority two at this point. We will meet the 50-foot setback for a future building. We will meet the 50-foot setback for a future building envelope to the well and edge. And for some reason, the wetland didn't come out on that plan, but it will on the proposed change. So, we're not challenging the priority two, but we are challenging the priority one, which is in red. And if you, if you notice, the priority one is a salt marsh. It's labeled as a 301 wetland, which according to Normandos, Normandos work, that's, that's basically, it is designated as a salt marsh. So, that'd be the low salt marsh. And you, and you can see, excuse me, it crosses over the roadway. And during my reconnaissance, I observed that that roadway actually segregates the land on both sides, and not arguing if it's wetland on both sides at this point, but it does segregate it. So, that is the existing map. As you can see, the, the priority one comes across the roadway, goes to the south, and because it's supposed to be a salt marsh, it requires a 250-foot buffer or RP, and you, and you'll see on the plan that the 250-foot buffer in, in the black line encompasses the whole lot. So, Denise contacted me, and I was tasked to look into this because the court officer basically wouldn't move forward with any, with any building permits until this was straightened out, so that's, that's why I'm here tonight. So, that's that map. Again, it's, if we're looking at the intention of the map, the intention of the map is to map a Priority 1 wetland that is a salt marsh, based on, based on what's, based on the map. So, my reconnaissance, I walked, I walked the roadway, I walked to the salt marsh into the Fragmites, along the salt marsh into the wooded area. I also walked across the roadway down into what I believe is freshwater wetland, and I also walked across the street from the Collins lot, which is wooded. And basically, what I found was, the salt marsh is, is significantly different than the map. I did some GPS. Matter of fact, I walked out right to the edge of that salt marsh. I did take a couple of GPS points, and in a, with a combination of GPS and aerial photography and just site observations, I drew in that line. Obviously, I can't map it, delineate it officially, because it's not our property, but, you know, if there's a site visit, I can show you where that delineation is or the, the observed area. But, yeah, from that line, that would be the edge of the low marsh, or where there's, where it's strict halo fights, which are basically not only salt tar, but they can handle a high, high salinity, whereas Fragmites, for example, is actually not considered a halo fight. It's actually salt tolerant, but it can handle the daily tidal flux of a, of a salt marsh. So, basically, what I'm proposing is, that's where I believe the salt marsh should be, and with a resulting 250-foot buffer, it, I believe it stops well short of the Collins lot. And to continue with that, across the roadway, where if you actually turn back to the first map, was mapped as, you could see that it's mapped as Priority 1, and now we can go back to the second map. Thanks. Thanks, Brittany. That's all freshwater wetland. Has cattails, sensitive fern, freshwater shrubs, so that definitely wouldn't meet the definition of a salt marsh. So, that's kind of where, that's, those are the reasons why I came up with this proposal. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ted, I'll start with you, if you have any questions.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate seeing this map on the, on the screen. I had a little trouble visualizing it from the, the two drawings that, that I had earlier. It, it makes it clear what you're, what you're saying. I, I would feel more comfortable after a sidewalk to, to see it also. Thank you.
Thanks, Ted. Janice?
I'm from layer with the street a little bit, because my kid had a friend who lived at the very end of it, so I was down there picking up and dropping off, and it's very wet. Collins lot, is there a home on there now?
What's that? No.
Is there a home?
No, it's undeveloped. Yeah.
Okay.
Previously cleared a while ago, I guess, but it's, it's undeveloped.
Okay, I, I think I probably want to see it for myself. Have you been working with a wetlands person, or are you a wetlands person?
I'm a wetland and soil scientist. Yeah, sorry.
All right, so I think I want to see it, and then it would probably be much more easy to understand what you want to do, so, thank you.
Thanks, Janice. Bob?
I think we did one of the map change out here a few years back for Dan Higgins. I think Jim Logan did it. I'm not sure. Obviously, the sidewalk will have to telltale. I do know that there's a lot of inconsistency with some of the mapping that was done by Normandos, which was off of high-level, you know, aerial photography, which is nowhere as near as accurate as today's stuff is, so, I understand that. I agree with the freshwater aspect, because I have been out there before, too, on something out, one other, I think it's the lot next to Collins lot that we looked at a few years ago, too.
Dan?
No, it seems pretty straightforward. I guess the only question I'd ever had would be the house to the right of the Collins lot. If the Collins lot is within that setback, then the house next to it would have had it been adjusted for some reason at some point as well, so.
Good point.
Just some observation.
Why I know we had done one map change out there, so. Where? Is the old train trestle, where is that on there?
You mean old tracks?
The old, it was, I think like a dam was what it did.
Yeah, I want to say, oh, is this working now? Frozen? Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Right there?
Yeah.
You may want to go back and look, because I think we did a map change for Dan Higgins down there that Jim Logan brought, and that rail bed, the old rail bed divide.
I looked for map changes in the clerk's office, and I didn't find that one, because they're supposed to be on file in the clerk's office.
Reviewed and approved on, so whether it's, I mean, in the rail bed, the old rail bed was part of that delineation change.
I can double-check with the clerk's office.
You may want to double-check on that. It may not be the same location, but as I started looking at, it looks like a rail bed, and I know we did something out there, and because Dan Higgins was going to build a house.
Property, what, they, did the Higgins own the property?
Yeah, and they were, they actually built a house out there, so. Lot that had the issue with the setback.
I will double-check with the clerk's office. They just put everything to an Excel sheet with everything that they have, and any map change is supposed to be recorded down there, so.
It would be in the property files.
I've checked the, well, I checked the property file for this property, but, yeah, I could check the property files for the other ones.
We may have already made the change.
Well, in any event.
Need to find out. That needs to be clarified.
I did look, though. I just wanted, for the record.
You gotta remember, some of us have institutional knowledge.
Right. So... We'll still want to go out there and take a look.
Oh, definitely.
And if she turns something up that turns it mute, then, then we'll cancel it. But we can schedule a sidewalk, and I don't know...
It would have to be the lot next to him, though. Because that's the only line that, only property that it would, so that's, makes my looking easier in that property file, so.
Because what we're... I remember walking out there. The end is just one property at the end. That's the, the old cell tower site, right? Or does the, does the road keep going? No, that's the end of the road? Is that the end of the road there?
It might have been from the other direction, too, because there's water on the other side.
Okay. Well, let's, let's schedule a sidewalk. I mean, I don't, we'll have to observe right from the road. We're not going to walk out into the marsh. We'll observe the site, their, their site, and we'll, we'll observe what we can see from the road, and what you can point out. We can't go on other property. So... All right, so dates, times.
That time of year, we can do them during the week, right? I know it's tough for Bob.
The next two weeks are going to be impossible for me to do on a weekend. No, I have three applications that have to be suspended in the next two weeks.
This Saturday, are you guys available this Saturday?
Unfortunately, I can't make it this Saturday, but I can make it the following Saturday after. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm unavailable, but I'll just check with other board members. Uh, May 6th? It's May Day. Won't be terrible. Just got to get through town. It would be 8:00 AM on May 6th. There'll be some traffic downtown. Kennybunk. As an FYI.
They closed the road, too, so make sure you get through before the parade.
Parade's not until...
There's no, like, road race that day, is there? I remember the select where they were approving a whole bunch of road races in the last meeting.
Lot on the 6th, the 21st is down at the beach.
You can't, you can't do May 6th? Ted can't do the 6th.
What, Jim? Okay.
He will not be available, right? Right, now Dick's not going to go. I mean... That's right. All right, we'll schedule it for the 6th, and...
I'm not here that weekend, but I don't know if that matters.
During the week? Their planning board and then other stuff.
If you did during the week, you maybe only get four members there as opposed to three. I don't know if that, I know Bob wouldn't be able to come, but...
All right, alternative days. I mean, we can do it with three. We're just checking other times. Let me just throw this out there. Thursday, May 4th. Are you available Thursday night? I don't know if you have...
I have site planned, but that's not till 7:00, so if it was at 6...
On the 4th, you have...
Yeah, I have site plan meeting.
When are they, the 1st and Thursday? Were they just the 1st?
They're usually the 3rd Thursday of the month, but the April meeting was during school vacation, and some people couldn't make it, so we rescheduled it to the 4th, but that's at 7:00, so I could go to a sidewalk prior to that meeting.
Anybody else available on the 4th? It would be at 6:00? 6:00 PM? So, we could have four of us there. Would that be preferable to the 6th? Would you, would you be available?
I can be, I can be available on the, the 4th.
And you're unclear, but, all right, let's schedule it then for the Thursday, May 4th at 6:00 PM. Yeah, it's not this week, it's next week. Okay, we will see you then.
I got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
I might be doing another map correction on another property. I was wondering, in terms of presentation, I, I think I did hear a comment about, from Ed, maybe that it was a little bit difficult to follow, but Brittany and I talked, Brittany and I talked about a little bit, and I originally had both on the same plan, but we kind of thought it was too much, right? Yeah, so I, that's why I did two plans, but what would you prefer in the, in the future, I guess?
I think they probably want the aerial. Did that make it easier with the aerial?
You want the aerials? Okay.
If the choice is between that and what we got, that's better, the aerial.
Oh, you do like the aerial? Okay, all right.
It helps, obviously.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'll be in touch if I find anything in the file. I'll look tomorrow.
Next item on our agenda is map correction for Shoreland zoning map at 258 Emmons Road. Sounds somewhat familiar. Who painted this neighborhood? Brittany?
So, this is a map correction for 258 Emmons Road. This should seem familiar, because the abutting property did the same thing with the Loma, to remove the portion of the property from the flood zone. They are using Article 3, Section 1F of the zoning ordinance. They hired Corner Post Land Serving to apply to FEMA for a letter of map amendment. They supplied the letter of map amendment, the elevation form, the plan, and copies of the Shoreland zoning map showing the property for the board to review. Similar to the last application, Shoreland zoning map and FEMA maps sometimes have inaccuracies. There is a provision for the board to review these inaccuracies and make corrections. There is a wetland on this property that the applicant would have to cross to get to the uplands. That would be done at a later date. They are just proposing to remove the area from the flood zone at this time. They are aware of that wetland crossing requirement, so the board should determine if the supply documentation meets the requirements to move forward with a public hearing. Also, we didn't set a public hearing for that last application. Should I see if I can go grab him quick?
Sure. Does he need to be here?
I guess he doesn't. Well, what's his availability? Do we care?
We could set it, and then...
Is it on the application? Sorry, I should have caught that.
There is a phone number on the application.
Do you want me to call him quickly?
Sure.
Back up here. Sorry about that.
Yep, it's the same.
He's, he's coming right back. He's, he's coming right back.
Thought you were just gonna keep him on the phone and we could've just. Is there room on the?
So we're thinking May 22nd for a public hearing? Okay, that works for everybody, perfect.
We'll set the public hearing date for May 22nd, 2023, for the application of 24 Forest Hill Lane.
With the noticing requirements, we couldn't do the 8th because it's 13 days prior for a map correction, so.
Okay, sorry. So you were saying, are you, were you done saying about?
I was done saying that, uh, this is just for taking it out of the flood zone.
Flood zone, that there is a.
Similar to the property next door, yeah.
File an application to cross if he's gonna do any work out there, right? Okay.
Also, um, in the application, I believe it was page 10, there was a, um, an accuracy in the copy of the Shoreland map. It's the lot next door, not the lot that's proposed, and the applicant gave me new plans to hand out to the board to see. And this is Rick Perkins, the property owner.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so.
Should be a direct replacement for what's in the packet.
Yeah, 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 gotcha. Looks like that most of your. All right, so where are we? I'm trying to get my orientation on this. Where's the brook? It's here, so.
So this is the brook, this lot is divided this way now. This is where 258.
This is Emmons Road.
This is where the property was we were yesterday, and this is the property that, that's lying goes here, and this is Emmons Road.
Where's Chipmunk Way?
Down here.
Okay. All right, well, this is still confusing.
This, this lot is divided like this now, it's not updated on the map.
Oh, this one's still divided. Now we got it, now we understand, okay.
Not easy.
So the Shoreland map doesn't have the most up-to-date lot lines because of when it was created.
Got it. All right, so currently.
So if you're, if you're looking at the subdivision plan that's up on the board or the lot split.
Yep.
This is the whole lot as it's shown on, I'm gonna use the hand so you can actually see it. This is the whole lot as it's shown on the Shoreland map.
Yep.
So now this line exists, dividing that lot into two, and then Chipmunk comes through here.
And the property.
Property walked last weekend is this lot here, and this is the lot that they are proposing to remove from the flood zone. This section of this whole lot.
Yep.
So this looks a little more challenging because it looks like a very tiny.
This is the original, this is the original.
Right, the lot. Right, so where the cursor is now the little hand, that's, that's what's proposed now for us to look at.
That's what is existing on the map according, this is before the proposed change, so Brittany, why don't you show us what they're proposing? Or what's the new flood line?
Okay.
This is what's coming out. This is the setback from the wetlands, I believe.
All right, so this is. Why don't you talk to us about, about your lot and, so we're just asking us to remove a square out of the flood zone or we're trying to change the elevation of?
Well, my understanding
Yep.
is that FEMA had the flood zone map covering this, most of this area.
Yep.
And they recently upgraded their, their flood maps so that most of what they're considering flood is really in the blue, completely away from this area.
Yep.
However, in terms of upland area, it's really. That's based on the setback from the current wetlands that are in the area.
Gotcha.
So those little fingers that you saw on the previous map, it's just really delineating setback from those. That's why that's such a smaller building envelope from our neighbor.
Yep. So, maybe I was incorrect. That first map you're, uh, that is the actual proposed lot then with the building envelope in red, is that true?
Yeah, you see, um.
Okay.
Ours, so based on the existing mapped wetlands there, that's the building.
That's the building envelope in that one.
It's quite restrictive.
Yep.
The area out there is, uh, well, as you can see, it's got some wet fingers in it. But I think if you did a walk through, you'd see that there's a fair amount of upland area there, but, um, it certainly isn't devoid of wetlands. I don't wanna misrepresent it.
Okay, and so. So we're clear, Brittany, so we are amending the flood plain map? What are we, sorry, what are we?
The flood zone map.
The flood zone map.
Which is also one of the layers on the Shoreland map. So you're amending the Shoreland map to remove that area from the flood zone.
To agree with FEMA's reconsideration.
Right.
And the Loma letter that we did receive from FEMA.
Yeah, okay.
It might be interesting to ask Corner Post if they only remove that small area as part of their application because that's the only building envelope area because it seems strange to do it that way, whereas when the lot next door, there's a bigger building envelope, so they remove that whole area. I wonder if they just made it that little square, so it might be worth asking them before the next meeting or before the site walk. Because if you look at the topo on both properties, they seem pretty similar.
Mm-hmm.
73, 72, 71, and this removed a bigger, I mean, it's a little higher over here, but.
That stream or whatever.
Right, so I'm wondering if he just kept it to your building envelope to remove that from the flood zone instead of removing everything that could've been removed from the flood zone.
Oh, you mean that versus the square that he was talking about?
But it, it might be possible that.
This is way above my.
Area might've been removed, you know what I mean?
I see what you're saying.
But if he kept it to just the building envelope. Cause it's odd that it's a square.
Yeah.
But that might be the reasoning if you, if you could ask them prior to the meeting.
That's fine, but. We just need to be clear for, for us what we are approving, you know.
You would be approving the removal of that square area per the Loma.
From?
The flood zone.
From the flood zone.
Yep.
So. Which would then bring our. Which would be consistent then with.
This red line, if you read the note, it says limits of Zone A for effective firm typical. Is that the old line?
Yeah.
In red?
I think so.
Yeah, and then the one we looked at before basically took everything to the other side of Chipmunk Road. Why would it just be that box?
Cause he's got other wetlands in there, I guess.
That's not the flood plain.
Right, why didn't find the, follow the topo line?
Yeah.
I should've followed the topo line, whatever that, if it's 71, it should've followed the 71 topo line and removed everything from 71 towards the lot we looked at the last time.
I mean, it may not make any difference in terms of your ability to build, but it just seems awkward to just do one little patch.
That's what I'm saying, I'm wondering if they did that because that's the only spot that you could build in.
Well, that, that's my guess, just because of the other wetlands that my neighbor Donnie doesn't have, is what we have, and so the setback from those wetlands is what creates that building envelope polygon.
Yep. Yeah, don't we understand, I think we understand the building envelope, but the, the question is why did they just want to remove that square from the flood zone? But I guess.
So.
Why the square, yes. Will that come to effect when they come for a building permit for the driveway?
Well, so they already have to come for a wetland crossing anyways.
Well, I'm saying, for that approval, does it matter if it's in a flood zone or not? Does that make it?
It's in the RP, but it's similar to the one we're reviewing for Jeffrey's Way. That's also in the RP, the driveway. The board's looking at the whole driveway and the crossing, so it'd be similar to that application.
The other interesting challenge to this thing is that your neighbor has a map change. It's gonna go contrary when we try to figure out how to amend our map to conform with the two different designations. I mean, I don't remember his, but his, that line basically was on the other side of Chipmunk.
Yeah.
So that if this ultimately is the line, it still stays, that's what's confusing.
It wasn't on the other side. It was, Chipmunk was the boundary line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But what I'm looking at is the red line designation for the, uh, the flood zone.
So it'll now just.
Yeah, where's the flood zone when you look at that?
It would run the property line, it'd follow the property line. Instead of the topo line.
I think to what Bob was saying though, it would follow Chipmunk down.
And then it'd hook on the property line and then connect to this square and then run back along the property line.
Yeah, but ideally, we could remove the entire parcel from the flood zone. Even though there are setback restrictions to other wetlands, the flood zone takes them out of, the whole property out, and also because you.
That's my understanding, yes.
I don't know what the insurance requirements are, but it would remove the entire parcel from any flood insurance requirements as well, even though they're not part of the building envelope.
I guess that's a question for them to ask.
Corner Post.
Yeah.
Corner Post. Didn't Corner Post do the other one?
Yep. I don't think I can.
That language on, on the, our neighbors as well, area proposed to be removed.
Yeah. But it shows a different area. I don't know if it looks bigger because it follows, hold on, can I connect to the internet? Yeah, it says proposed lot. So the whole lot was removed from the flood zone? This, everything in black.
Promise our survey is paid in full, so I don't know what that.
Paid full, but he should be responding to the questions at clarity.
Yeah.
If he, you know, if he hadn't done the one next to you, you know, where he did both lots, there should be some ability to clarify where those lines are.
Yet, to be honest, there's no reason, to your point, why he would have something.
Yep.
Exactly.
I don't understand why.
Or since there's a wetland on his property, at least following the topo line along the wetland, if that floods.
You know, when you look at what the elevations are along Ward's Brook, you know, I mean, that climbs straight up to Chipmunk.
Yeah.
Right.
So, and that's enough of a divide, cause we walked almost all the way down to the end of the Chipmunk.
We didn't quite get to the, to where his.
I know, but when you look at what the grades were along that top, it was still a bluff dropping down to Ward Brook. He didn't get down just past the first lot and everything dove back down either.
Maybe there's a, a channel that comes through that's deeper. I don't, I don't know, what.
Even if it was, it would.
When you cross over Chipmunk over that stream on your property, what's, is it a culvert? Is it a box culvert?
It's a box culvert. There, actually, there's two on either side of, of our property, yeah.
Oh, one?
That was the culvert, that was the culvert we saw.
One on the inlet side, one on the outlet side.
So what they're saying on their elevation is it's 6.66 is the flood elevation, and the lowest point on this property is 70.9. So to me, I guess I don't understand why they didn't remove it all. Based on their elevation form. Similar to the, a budding property.
Yeah, I've got a note here to, to follow up with him.
Ask him to write you a memo to clarify why he chose that.
Yeah.
Because it's different than your neighbor, and so it's confusing the board.
No question, yeah, I, I didn't think about it, to be honest.
Yep, that's okay.
I was really focused on that building envelope, following the, the wetlands versus.
Yep, no, I mean, that makes sense for sure. But we can still do a site walk and look at it and get some clarification, either by the, by the site walk or we'll have, have to have it before we send a notice out, I guess, but.
I was just looking at the topo provided on the subdivision plan, the lowest number I see is, this is 69. I mean, it might be. It's saying the lowest elevation on theirs was 70, so.
Um, so do we wanna schedule a site walk? Wanna see the site regardless? Back to our concerns, it would, I think it would be a if you did it on the 6th, it would be three people.
Probably too far from, too far from the other one to try and put them back to back on the 4th.
Not gonna do them on the 4th.
Oh, that too. I'm just thinking travel distance and walking time. A little darker side probably by that time.
For me, I could consider either Thursday, the 11th, or Saturday, the 13th, as alternate dates. For me, I could consider either Thursday, the eleventh, or Saturday, the thirteenth, as alternate dates.
I will not be here. I'll be leaving to go north of the border.
Either of those dates.
On Thursday.
Either of those. Ted, do either of those dates work for you? The eleventh or thirteenth? So we'd have four people there. Are you available on the eleventh? Are you available on the eleventh?
Anytime.
Thursday night?
Sure.
Thursday evening. Let's do it, um, Thursday evening, the eleventh, at six PM.
So I heard May eleventh at six PM?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yep.
Want to set a public hearing date, or we want to see when they can get information back to us? Set a public hearing date in anticipation that they get information?
We'll have the answer to this question this week, just so you're aware.
Yeah, that'd be great. So, public hearing on the twenty-second?
Yep.
We'll set a public hearing for May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. We'll just need to get that clarification by two weeks before, thirteen days prior.
Yeah, um, so, May eighth?
Yep. Yeah, so if you can get that clarification right by May eighth, that way we'll have it both for the site walk and we can get it into this, for the, um, public hearing notice. We'll have that information.
Definitely.
Any other questions from the board about this?
No.
Good, Chris, I guess, just making sure you understand why we're asking.
Sure.
This is so that we can clear the whole parcel for you, not just one aspect of this.
Understood.
Make our maps a little more consistent.
Yep.
One of the questions, I'll just address the, the board, one of the questions that Brittany asked of me was whether or not by taking out this piece of, of land, were we creating a non-conforming lot, meaning something less than three acres at our existing home lot?
Right.
And that's not the case.
Okay.
So, we're above the three acres, yeah.
Good. All right, uh, thank you very much.
Okay.
We'll see you on the eleventh.
You'll be hearing from me soon.
Yeah, awesome.
Thanks.
Yeah, have a good night. Next seminar agenda is to approve meeting minutes from Monday, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Corrections on page one? Page two? Page three? Any issues at all? All right, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, as presented.
Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstain, four in favor, one, zero, four, zero, one. He knows the deal. No, I guess I could have just. Brittany, do you have anything else for us?
Um, I have the findings of fact for Millstone Farm, the subdivision amendment to sign. It's going to be that time if the board thinks of there, any other zoning changes they want to make for the November election, if anything's popping out at you.
Actually, actually, there's one on tonight's waiver request for that two-foot landscape strip. That's been on a bug list to get rid of and never have been able to figure out why we ever put that in the zoning ordinance, because it makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. Because if you put that two-foot strip in between the parking in the building, you're going to walk through the plant strip in order to get into the sidewalk. And where that came from?
It's nice to separate the sidewalk from the parking. I mean, that's why, that's, and from the roads, I mean, is it different for a road than a dri, than a parking lot? Are the, are the standards different?
It's all written that one way, between parking and the sidewalk.
I mean, it can be mulched, you know, if you need that.
I prefer, certainly, I would prefer that there be some separation of the sidewalk from a road. I, I don't.
Now, this is, this refers to parking?
Well, that's what I'm saying, are the standards the same? And if they are the same.
Oh, no, no, this is just strictly reciting the section for parking.
It is the parking section, yeah.
Okay.
Because we've had to grant that waiver, I don't know how many times.
Well, from a parking lot, I can understand. I mean, I, I support that, but if we're talking about separation of the roads, then I, I don't.
No, 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 no. That makes sense. I mean, if you got your road here and a sidewalk here, that gives you that physical separation.
Yes.
The only thing that's going across there is some guy that does lost control, and the plant's not going to do anything.
Right.
Theoretically, we keep someone from walking out onto the street, but.
Yeah, I mean, again, the only thing that it does is prevent the sidewalk from getting overcrowded by vehicles when they park.
That's why, that's why I push for the six-foot wide sidewalk.
I understand, we're not, are we gonna?
Oh, let me put it this way. I did a project for IDEX.
Yep.
That we got taken off of. Person they hired to do the plan put a bloody three-foot planting strip between the parking and the sidewalk. On both sides, it was a double-headed sidewalk quay and parking. And all the plant material was killed because everybody got out of their car and to walk onto the sidewalk and to trample through the plants. So, that part doesn't make sense. If you don't put a walkway in there, that's something different. So, but in this case, it just makes absolutely no sense if you're going to have someone getting out of their vehicle, not trample through the plant material. They're not going to walk around to get to a walkway.
I agree.
I can agree, as we, as long as we change the sidewalk depth like we did with this. Because as I, first I said, oh, mulch is good, but then I, I made back to a story, a friend of mine in New Jersey who's on the fire department told me, where people throw cigarette butts in the mulch and they catch it on fire, and the fire department has to come out. And they do that in the mulch next to the buildings too. So, they have one complex where there's been like six fires in the last year, where people toss it off their balconies. So it's just something for us to keep in mind, I guess, but I, I, I would agree, because no, it's, nothing is going to grow in there.
I just found it interesting, last week's site walk, the first one, the space between the road and the sidewalk was just stone.
Yeah.
This is the first Jeffrey's Way?
On the way to Jeffrey's Way.
The street leading into Jeffrey's Way, that cul-de-sac there?
Yeah, yeah.
You had the road, then you had a stone two-foot section, and then you had the sidewalk.
I doubt, it didn't even look like two feet, which is why I was like, I think it was like, if I got out measured, I'm sure that was not. But.
But I think to Bob's point, though, extending that to like six feet on a sidewalk for somebody with a pickup truck backing up, and they back up until their wheels hit the the curb, then you've got the bed of the truck hanging over.
So realistically, if we're going to make some changes to that, there should, there's a few others probably that could be made to Article eleven, so I can take a peek.
That would just popped out when I started looking at the waivers, and it just.
We probably shouldn't just, uh, add back in some, for the ADUs, for those who weren't here.
Yeah, I was just gonna.
Selectment's meeting.
Yeah.
Bring that up.
They changed one thing that's going to the voters, so they, we put in a thousand square feet maximum, or forty percent.
Yeah.
Whichever's less, they got rid of the forty percent. So now it's up to, anything up to a thousand square feet. Wayne had come up and.
Argued.
Argued again, and they're like, Chris was like, well, I can understand that, and I could get behind it, but Chris Ostrider, uh, I did not have a chance, oh.
You didn't give a chance to speak?
I had a chance to speak, I couldn't come up with my thoughts to rebut that on the moment, so.
I think a good suggestion would be forty percent, however, if that's less than six fifty, you can build up to six fifty, something along those lines.
I would just say make it maybe like eighty percent. There has to be some relation to the principal lot, the principal.
Right, right now, there's none.
There's none. They, the way it's pros, pros now, the accessory doesn't have any relation to it.
In other words, you could have a hun, you could have an eight hundred square foot unit.
And put a thousand eighty on.
A thousand square feet.
Yeah.
But their concern was that the forty percent would be less than the six fifty that we already permit. That's why they deleted the forty percent, because they're saying it's making it smaller than what we currently allow. From my understanding, I was not at the meeting, but.
Yes, that's, that's why Chris was like, oh, wait, that, I didn't think of that, so he's like, all right, I understand, we don't want to make it more restrictive than what we currently have.
I mean, I, I.
I think that there still should be some.
I looked at my house, eleven hundred and twenty-five square feet, I have a very small house, so I could put up four hundred and some square feet if I want the grand kid to have a little place there. And that's livable, but I, yeah, I see what you mean about the six fifty. I wanted to ask, did, there's a couple of state, you know, legislative bills in to either only make this for towns with more than ten thousand residents and also delay it. Um, have you heard anything? Okay, I've been kind of keeping an eye on that.
I think it was MMA was trying to delay the whole thing.
So, I would look to see if we put some, I mean, maybe it's too early, maybe we just have to do it when we go back to some of that stuff in next June or whatever, I don't.
I think you could make, and, we could talk about it, but we probably shouldn't do anything official, because if it doesn't pass in June, then there's nothing really to touch. If it does pass in June, we probably should do something. A thousand square feet seems big, especially on a nine hundred square foot home.
Or let's back our way out of it. If it gets approved on the fourteenth, and we want to do something in November, when would we have to have things through the public hearing process to get to the selectmen to be on in November?
So, because they changed their summer schedule, they have a meeting on August first or second, and they don't have another meeting till August thirtieth, whatever the last Tuesday is. So, Kenny McSavings is probably coming back with a revised contract zone from what we saw, so I've been telling people June twelfth to get something to us preliminary with public hearings in July and carry over into our meetings in August, so there's some wiggle room there. I've been saying if you can get on the May twenty-second meeting, that would be great. Um, June twelfth is kind of like the last meeting for a preliminary review. But zoning changes, if it's something minor like that, um, we could have a public hearing, that a first meeting in August would be the last public hearing without having a continued meeting to the twenty-eighth, and then the select board's meeting on the twenty-ninth. So there's time for us to make a minor change like that, that we would be familiar with, not an in-depth change, if we were looking at rewriting Article eleven, that's a little different.
I think, you know, taking the opportunity to, you know, really think about it a little bit more, which we didn't have an awful lot of time to really look at what some of the numbers, and you were looking at what other towns did, and I think they were just grabbing at straws of what to do. You know, I know Cape Elizabeth was struggling with what they wanted to, to do, including not do it at all, by some members of the public, I guess, so.
So, maybe we revisit that. But I think there's also a question about whether we need to start to revert back to doing more of our policy work and implementation stuff. We've been, historically, our first meeting in the, was a policy meeting of the month, where we'd work on zoning changes and amendments and that sort of stuff. Implementing the comp plan and some of those, and then the second meeting was project meetings. And if we didn't have a full policy meeting, we could add a project here or there on that. We got away from that because we were getting very busy, and there was, comp plan was getting, we had been through all the comp plan stuff, and so we hadn't updated the comp plan, so it was less policy stuff to really tackle. And that started kind of right, getting away from that when John was here, but, so you don't have that context, but that's typically, historically, how we had been working, because we need to do both things. I don't know that we have, we're still pretty busy with projects, but I think there's still time for us to start to put in more policy stuff, to do, to address some of the comp plan stuff and other things, so.
Do real planning stuff.
Anything about that?
I think that's doable once we get through contract zone stuff, but yeah.
Yeah.
Because some of those are floating, yeah. So like, August? End of, end of July?
Yeah, right.
But it's something I think I'd like to try to get back to.
I love writing zoning. Very, I actually do, I don't mind writing zoning, it's a lot.
That's a good thing.
More structured.
Because we're going to give you a whole bunch of stuff, no, no.
All right, anything else, board members?
Um, Jeffrey's Way, they.
Oh, right.
Need to do a vernal pool study, so they requested to be rescheduled to June twelfth for their public hearing.
That is fine.
Okay.
We will reschedule them to June twelfth. Yep. Board members have any?
Nope. I guess that means.
That's you.
That's me. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.